Thank you, everyone, for your patience. I promise we didn't do that on purpose, but next up, we have Monica Workman.
Hello.
Hello. If you could raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response given and statement made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth? I do.
Say your name and address, please.
Okay, that was part of this. I'm Monica Workman, city resident at 1064 Valley Brook Drive, and a homeowner of nearly 20 years, and also a local business owner. I find myself in front of this body urging you to reconsider the upcoming increase on our property taxes. Our property taxes are raised most recently in 2019, a mere six years ago. Raising them again so soon is, in my opinion, a move that will put undue burden on our town, and here's why. We currently find ourselves in an unstable economy with prices for everything going up steadily as the tariffs are hitting. In contrast, wages have held steady. Many residents of this town are struggling with these increases, and finding a decent place to rent at affordable cost is almost impossible. Raising property taxes during uncertain times and climbing prices for goods and services, as you remember, you just raised our electricity cost recently, is a move that will hit hard as the increase will surely be handed down to renters. If this town is to thrive, you should consider how this will affect those who rent in Hagerstown as well as the property owners. In addition, the current real estate market seems to be a seller's market with prices soaring high. It's difficult for the younger generation to find homes to buy already, and adding an increase in property taxes will make it even more so. Our town is supposed to be a place you want to attract people to, but instead you're going to achieve the opposite. With soaring costs and little to do in town, you will drive people away. Hagerstown is not a bedroom community for D.C. or Baltimore, and cost of living should not be as high or higher than that of a community that is. Since the tendency exists to compare ourselves to Frederick, I looked up the 2324 property tax rates across Maryland. Frederick's tax rate is lower than Hagerstown's. We're currently at 1.0020, and Frederick is at .7305. Finding this difference, I thought it would be fun to look at the tax rate closer to our capital. Rockville is at .2920, and Gaythersburg at .2620. The only other towns in Maryland going over the one-point-something tax rate are Salisbury and Cumberland. This means that we are one of only three cities in Maryland with this high of a tax rate, and you're proposing to go even higher, making us the leading town in property taxes. Of all the things we should strive for, making us one of the most expensive places for property taxes should not be one of them. I urge you to consider the increase, keeping in mind the additional strain it will put on your constituents and the idea that this town should be a place where people want to and can afford to live in. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is Melissa Crocker.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response given and statement made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Hi, I'm Melissa Crocker, and I am a homeowner at 1443 Fleming Avenue, and I also have a rental property. I'm Nottingham. Right now, my tenants were given a 30-day notice for eviction because they knew we were going to rehab the property, and we had to extend that 90 days because they cannot find another place to rent within their budget. I opted to go ahead and raise their rent $50 apiece, $150 a month, and they are still having trouble with that. So I hate to see how other renters are doing right now, and my rent is only $1,800. It's not even at the $2,400 range, which it should be at. On top of that, right now, Hagerstown is proposing higher taxes than Frederick County, Maryland. And if you go into Frederick County, they have amazing restaurants, nightlife, a good time. You can go down the canal, there's sightseeing, and here, there's not any, anything like that. You go downtown past 8 o'clock, and you have hunched-over people getting hit in the road, and it's just not, it's not a good time here in Hagerstown. I think that we need to redo the budget in another way, and I understand that events, you guys talked about a long time, well, I think two meetings ago, events and how the police and the fire department and all these people have, you know, they have to be a part of it, and you have to pay them for that, and people love events, and people love free stuff, and yes, Hagerstown does need a big community engagement. Maybe we can nickel-and-dime that a little more. I'm not really sure. I'm not the end-all, be-all of a budget, but I will say that adding property taxes to Hagerstown is a, is a bad move because you are taxing people right out of their home. I'm already ready to move. I'm just so ready to move. I'm like, that's it, we're going down south, because every year it's something else. Not only are the taxes going up, but our assessed value has gone up as well. So it's not like you're taxing my assessed value from last year or the year prior. So that's all I have to say. Please don't tax us anymore.
Okay, next up, Patty Purdum. Okay. All right, Kim Crocker.
If you could raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response given and statement made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth? I do. Thank you.
My name's Kim Crocker. I live in Hagerstown. I have rental property here. I live on Jefferson Pike in Frederick, Maryland. I'm just here to say pretty much the same thing, like, you know, food is outrageous, gas is outrageous, water's high, electric's high, and we really cannot afford a property tax increase at this point. That's pretty much all I have to say. Really would like you all to reconsider on that because it is, it does hurt people. It does hurt tenants. You have to raise the rent. I have amazing tenants. I want to keep them. They're happy where they are. They keep the house immaculate, and I'd like to keep them. So that's really all I have to say, just in this economy, I think you should find some other way to cut the budget up here besides adding to our property taxes. Thank you.
Thanks, Kim. Next up, Marshall Fuller.
Good evening.
Hang on one second, Marshall.
If you would raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response given and statement made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm the homeowner at 912 Oak Hill Avenue. I have lived in my home since I was nine years old, and I've always said I want to stay there until I'm carried out in a body bag. But if taxes keep going up, it can be a problem because there's so much increase in so many expenses, and my income does not adequately reflect that. So I would ask you, please, not to raise. Thank you.
Thanks, Bar. Yeah, I do. Next up, Willa Markless.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response given and statement made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. My name is Willa Markless. I live at 14402 Green Castle Pike, Hagerstown. I own a duplex on Jefferson Street. I have kept my rent reasonable, but I'll have no alternative but raise the rent if taxes are raised again. I pay water. That was raised, and I'm just asking you to please consider not raising taxes. Thank you.
Thanks, Will. Next up, Clayton Markless.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response given and statement made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
My name is Clayton Markless, and I have two residences in the city of Hagerstown, and I have multiple rental properties here as well. I have to say, in the last, you know, five years, the gas has increased, the water, wastewater's increased, the trash rate has basically tripled, I believe, in that time. It used to be 27, now it's, I think, 47. It's not tripled, it's more than doubled. I believe it used to be 23. The electric has now increased, and the 2009, there also was an increase in real estate taxes. There also was a 50% increase in the rate of the rental licenses. Rental licenses used to be $50 a year, another $75 a year. And I do, I love living in Hagerstown. I've been living in Washington County for 38 years, and I do believe, you know, I do understand everything in this, in this economy, in this world has increased, but the only thing I worry about is that increasing this will really just push a huge burden on the tenants who can barely pay rent as it is. They can barely afford food as it is. We do live in, like, the third poorest county in the entire state of Maryland. We're one of the richest states, but we do live in the third poorest county. And I just do think a property, property tax increase is going to affect the property owners, homeowners who live here, and it's really going to really kind of squeeze the tenants out who do live here. I also know, I recently searched Google, and there was, I mean, the ball field, you know, I love the ball field. I go there all the time. It's amazing. I mean, I don't even think they pay property taxes, which I kind of looked on Google and said that they don't really have property tax. So we're all paying property tax, and they got a buy from it, and that's kind of hard for me. So all I'm saying is, I do think that increasing the property tax will exclude certain homeowners from buying here, and it will really, really squeeze the tenants who are really struggling to make it in this economy, in this town. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Clayton. Next up, Paul Quarterman.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response given and statement made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Full record, Paul Quarterman, resident city of Hagerstown, homeowner and business owner. So I just want to start off real quick, and we have three minutes. There's not a whole lot of time here, but Will was led off, I think, by the Finance Director and from the Administrator's Statement in his, in the budget. A 0.055 said tax increase is necessary, responsible measure to ensure the continued safety and well-being of our community. And I've also heard during various conversations that the reason for this tax increase is to provide public safety that we feel necessary for our police officers. And I'm first to say that we need to be funding our police officers, fully funded them to the best of our ability, but I take an issue when we're telling, as a, as a property owner to business owner, that we're telling our citizens the only way to provide police services is to raise their taxes. The reality is, over the last four to five years, the city has been spending at a clip, a historical clip, that we have not seen before. In just the last five years, the general fund has gone from about $48 million to now a proposed $71 million. And if you look at just the debt service alone, from last year to this year, what's going into this year, you picked up a one-point, almost $2 million debt service in regards to the fieldhouse and the parteras. And I'm not here to say the projects were good, bad, or indifferent. I'm just saying that's the reality. If you're paying $1.2 million more, that's half of what your budget deficit is right now. So there's a variety of different things you can look at. There's long-term issues and conversations that probably be had potentially with the county as far as are there ways to consolidate services, are there ways to consolidate possibly group of insurances? Under the city of self-insure, when it comes to their insurances, I'm not sure what the county is, but that's something I would encourage you looking into. The golf course has always been a drain on the, on the budget. The last I looked is about a $300,000 or $400,000 subsidy. That could be off by a couple hundred thousand here or there, but at some point, that needs to be looked at long-term. In the short term, as we look at the budget, we have about six or seven things I went through real quick. The unions are always going to be a challenge because we already, we already know what those numbers are going to be, and you can pretty much extrapolate what those raises are going to be. Our non-union employees, and again, none of these things will be popular, but there's almost a $0.5 million in salary increases are proposed in this budget for everyone here, basically in City Hall. So I'm not saying that you don't do that, but I would challenge your staff to come up and find the $500,000 savings, or perhaps you don't move forward with those $500,000 increases in salaries. When you look at economic development, I'm a huge economic development fan. The first, third program has been tremendous. We're paying $1.7 million for that. Maybe we need to cut that in half. That's about $800,000. You look at the three departments had the largest increases, legal counsel, community engagement, IT. You have a 16%, 22%, 25% increase. I don't know what's going on with legal counsel, but you went from $237,000 two years ago to projected $352,000 this year. I don't know if lobbyists are included in that or not, and there's a federal lobbyist and a state lobbyist. Those two alone are about $120,000. Those three alone, if you just run those back to FY 2024 margins, you're saving $500,000. You could save $100,000 through contributive agencies if you only kept CRS Neighborhoods First and the library, which are probably your most utilized, community engagement. That's $100,000. You could do $400,000 if you took the Parks Division back to their FY 24 notes. All told, about these six things equate to about $2.5 million. So there are rooms make, make cuts. It's difficult. It's challenging, but I would, I would highly discourage us to continue with the messaging that the only way to provide public safety is by to raise taxes. That's not the message I want to see out of this city. That's not the message I'd want to see if I, if I was in your, in your shoes, in your administration. So I apologize for going over time. The last thing I would, I would end with, there was an election last year. Many of you are here because the city of Hagerstown expected a change. I don't think this is the change that people wanted to see. Thank you.
Next up, Sam Tobin. Did I pronounce your last name right?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
If you could raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response given and statement made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I have to agree with every person. The money seems to be running like water. Here is a feasibility study for this recreation thing, which is built and paid for. At the initial meeting, it was said that the, the cost of the building was going to be $24 million, and there was no money set aside. So if you take $24 million, a lot of that was bond-funded, was it not? It was borrowed money? Yes?
Yep.
Yes?
$15.9 million.
And what was the total?
$15.9 million.
All right. So $15.9 million, the rule of thumb is $10,000, $10,000 per month for a million dollars. So you're $150,000 a month principal and interest on that fieldhouse? Is that right?
Oh, more than that, yes.
Is it? What is it?
It's close to a million.
A month, I mean?
No, it, it, it's annual. Annual. Annual debt repayment.
Our debt repayment is a million dollars, and that's about what our, our tax increase is supposed to be, about a million dollars. And I looked at the feasibility study when they did this thing, and I looked down through it, and it said, like, month one, they're going to raise $337,000 in revenue. In, in youth and adult sports, 300, you know, over a third of a million dollars. It's hard to believe. Then you get down to this line where it says debt service, it's zero all across the board. We bought a rec center and gave it to somebody, and the citizens of Hagerstown paying for it. How many people here are going to go use a rec center? So you, you got one. I know one other family that does two. So we're funding these projects that are great for the community, but you're hanging them on the city of Hagerstown's neck, and it's a 30-year deal?
Yes.
A million dollars a year for 30 years. How many fire, police, roads can we do for that? And I think that, you know, it, it's time to take a hard look at this stuff. We don't have an unlimited budget. Money doesn't grow on trees. This is example. This thing is going to get worse. It's going to be, they're going to lose money on this. The private people in Hager, in Frederick County and in Westminster that ran facilities like this gave it up. They sold it and closed it because they couldn't break even. And here we are, we're going to have to be a million something before we start running it, and we could end up, you could end up with a two or three million dollar anchor around our neck for 30 years. And it goes on and on and on like that, and it's got to end. It's, it's not our, it's not our tax dollars we're supposed to, you know, you can't borrow money to try to entice the public to come here. It's, it's a facility that'll be used by people all over the state of Maryland that come here. Maybe their revenue will generate, but I tell you, it's troubling when you read this thing, and they, nowhere in the 10-year plan or the 20-year plan is to run a debt service. They're raising $300,000 a month, and their, and their plan is going to spend $300,000 a month. And if they don't make it, what's going to happen? They're going to go bankrupt? The city's going, is the city not managing that facility? Is it?
No, sports manager, the eastern sports management's managing.
Oh, I thought that they were booted out.
No.
Well, that's all. I just, I just think things are going crazy while this, they're spending money that we don't have. And I think that what's going to happen is this thing's going to lose money, and then you're going to have to pull it out of services. It's going to get worse. Thank you.
All right, thanks, man. Okay, that's the last on the list, but is there anybody? Go ahead.
I just want to say that he brought a lot of numbers up that were great, and I have no desire to cut any police numbers at all here. I think we need increased police funding in this place. I know if you were a driver on town, you see what you see, and I don't know exactly if all these increases are going to go to police or not, but I don't want any cut, any police funding. I want police funding increased. I think that different things could be, you know, changed, as this gentleman said before about the budget stuff. So that's just my.
Appreciate it, Clay. Now, we've already, we've already, yeah. So anybody that isn't signed up that hasn't spoke yet would like to come up and speak. Okay. I appreciate everybody's input. Thank you. All right. Next up is a public hearing on something, on our proposed budget July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. I think anybody signed up for that.
A public hearing is being held for the FY 2026 budget. The proposed FY 2026 budget for the city of Hagerstown totals $223,747,300 across all city funds. The primary fund remains the general fund at $71.4 million, which reflects an 11.8% increase, or 7.5 million more than the current year. All other government funds total $18.4 million combined, which is a decrease of $20.8 million. The combined total of all enterprise funds is $121.3 million, which is an increase of 17.9% or $18.4 million. The budget amounts mentioned include both operating and planned capital expenditures, which result in a citywide increase of $5.4 million over the current FY 2025 budget. The public hearing notice was advertised on April 26, 2025. The budget record will remain open until May 20, 2025 to receive additional comments.
Okay, I don't think we had anybody signed up to speak on the budget, but if anybody would like to take three minutes and go ahead and speak on it? Okay. All right, next up is introduction of an ordinance, the tax rate beginning July 1st, 2025.
Mr. Mayor, hereby I move for the introduction of an ordinance on May 13, 2025, to establish the city's tax rates for fiscal year July 1st, 2025 through June 30 of 2026 on the basis of $1.50, $1.57, my mother never, sorry, $1.057 per $100 of assessed value of all real property, and $2.643 per $100 of assessed value of all business personal property within the city of Hagerstown.
I got a second.
You can discuss it when there's a second where you can discuss it.
Yeah, there's discussion.
But at this point, there is no second.
Should we just move on? Okay, you have a second on that, we'll move on.
Do the budget if there's no tax rate. Actually, there's nothing. You have no budget. You have no tax dollars. You've got nothing.
Okay. All right, we're not going to go through the budget since we didn't pass the tax rate. So next up is approval of the purchase of recycling totes from Raring Pacific Company.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for mayor council to approve of the purchase of 360 blue recycling totes of various sizes from Reher Pacific Company in the amount of $24,876.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any pose? Passes. All right. Next up is city administrator comment.
I have. Again, just want to do a shout out and send all thoughts and prayers to Scott, my son, and his family, and then mention a few of the upcoming events that are happening this weekend in our town. We have a 5K fund run and relay on Saturday, May 17 at 8:30. We have the porch fest Saturday, May 17 from 11 to 5. It's a free community event organized by South Prospect Street Neighborhood Group, sponsored in part by the city of Hagerstown and other local businesses. About 40 musicians play music from all genres on front porches, the main stage, and at a beer garden provided. at a beer garden provided by Hub City Brewery. National Pike Festival wagon train. Over the duration of three years, this train follows a historic national road scenic byway from Clear Spring to Boonsborough. Festivities begin on Friday and run through Sunday. The wagon train traditionally visits and stops at City Park Saturday afternoon, May seventeenth. And last but not least, on Sunday, we have our historic city farmer's market at Hub City Brewery, and that's from noon until four. And again, that will continue every Sunday from now through September.
You never go first, Councilwoman Burnett, you want to go?
Sure, just want to thank everyone for coming out, expressing your opinions on the budgets. It's important that everyone stays engaged in the city and county and state and federal level. So thank everyone for coming out.
That's one bell.
Yes, I'm going to piggyback that. Thank you for all coming out, your concerns. Also, just please understand when we sit at the table amongst us all, we are also affected. Everyone sitting at the table is also homeowners and business owners, so we get it. But once again, thank you for all coming out as well.
That's my prayer.
I want to thank everybody for coming out, because in the end of the day, that's why I moved to Hagerstown, because it's a wonderful town, but the taxes are very high here compared to other municipalities such as Montgomery County, Prince George's Hospital. So I appreciate everybody that had their talk tonight, and I also agree, we shouldn't have to make this an argument about public safety and what else we're going to do. I think we can fund public safety, and I didn't support all these other projects that came before I got elected. I think they're great. But in the end of the day, as a taxpayer, you don't want to pay any more higher taxes. And what would make you want to come to the city if you have a higher tax rate? So in the end of the day, you guys had your voice, I'm very proud of that, and thank you for standing up and being involved in your government, so.
Councilwoman Anderson.
So unfortunately, I'm a little bit, I consider myself a difficult one. I'm the difficult child at the table. So the reason why I did not second that ordinance is for one reason only. We have Senator Quarterman in the building. And Senator Quarterman, just know I have so much respect for you, and I'm only saying this out of respect for you. Based on the comments and the notes that you voiced up here for your, the three minutes, I felt like honestly, as a citizen who lives in the city of Hagerstown, and that also represents the people of Hagerstown, that conversation could have been, could have been done with us as a body as a whole prior to coming and voicing that today, because you did make a lot of sense, you made a lot of valuable points. I will add that to what you said. So just going forward, I, I would really hope that we could do things a little bit differently. You mentioned something about what the citizens voted for, and this is kind of like, this is not it. I agree with you to a certain extent, again, because I made it very, very, very clear on why I was running and why I wanted to be here. This needs to stop. This inconsistency between us, delegates, senators, commissioners, it has to stop. We all want the same. No one wants to see an increase in their taxes, I get it, I'm a homeowner as well. But if we have ideas that can help one another, we should literally help one another. This was not the way to go about it. Again, I'm only saying this because I have respect for you. Again, that's all I have to say for tonight.
I would also like to thank everyone that come out to speak on a very important subject. It's, it's great to hear everybody's voice on this, and it really, really helps drive decisions that we make. Again, I, I'll say it again, I have encouraged community engagement here in this council chambers, and we have got it since January, most of the time. I mean, it's not, it's not standing room only today, but most of the time it's been standing room only in here, and this is the most, excuse me, most community engagement that I have seen here, and I really appreciate everyone coming out. Number two, usually I'm, I'm kind of positive about everything. Today, I, I brought up a subject. I, I was coming to City Hall here today, and I know we have, coming up, we have a vote on a outdoor lodging ordinance. Some of the things that I saw today, I was really, really angry. I made phone call to the police department, and I, I give them kudos, one hundred percent, they were right out there right away. The police department does a great job, and sometimes I feel sorry for them and what they're being put through. I, I was very discouraged, and I hope we can really, really come together as a body and, and look into this. So with that, that's it for me. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. We forgot, as we were going on, we do have emails that were pertaining to the, is it just the budget or just the?
The property tax.
The property tax. So she would like to read, Donna would like to read them.
I just want to enter those into the record. First one is from Randall Moran, M-R-I-N, stating property taxes are already too high, retirees on a fixed come are hurting, fixed income are hurting. Then there's one from Andres Akamine, who is a science teacher with the Washington County Public School System. His students have been studying the impact of human activities on earth with a specific focus on the local area. He has not conducted a formal study, but research indicates that increasing the number of police officers does not consistently reduce crime or significantly impact drug abuse. In his experience, it helps to have students in school, even those who are disruptive, and he believes that the Washington County Public School educators, administrators are part of the solution for the city. And then a third one is from Nathan S., who understands and appreciates the fact that the city of Hagerstown is putting forth to, putting forth effort to beautify and improve the area that we live, that he agrees that the current police, fire, and rescue services are inadequate, however, does not think that the property, property tax increase is beneficial. So, and they will be posted with, on the city's website with the agenda for everyone.
Okay, do I get a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
A second? Any, any discussion from anyone on any tonight's agendas? All right, we're adjourned.